Good morning. It's called the order, the March thir- excuse me, the March 30th, Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Thank you. Will you all please stand for the flag salute and for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If everyone can please make sure their all microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly. I would appreciate it. If Brad now, our IT Director, could instruct everyone on how to raise their hands in the meeting.
Good morning.
Good morning, Brad.
Assuming that, assuming that folks in the meeting are using the Zoom client, if you select the Participants tab, and over on the very lower right-hand corner of the screen, when you select Participants, you'll see a Raise Hand function. That lets the host know that you would like to speak in the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Brad. At this time, we'll move into the citizen input. Citizens may speak to the county government, usually limited to three minutes, and not on today's agenda. Would anyone like to speak? Please, and state your name and address. Thank you.
Let me get to the right page. Sorry. My name is Erin Schmodder. I live at 1682 North Burma Road, just north of town.
Okay.
I'm gonna speak on the mic.
Could you, yeah, speak into the mic a little bit or?
Sorry.
Put it down to you, there you go.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I'm an engineer, so I really like data and statistics, so please bear with me because I have a lot of numbers and they're all relevant. So everything I do really comes with a risk analysis, so here are the risks I've analyzed. The number one cause of death in America is having your limbs torn from your torso, which is called abortion, but we'll ignore that one. Twenty-three percent of all other deaths in America are caused by heart disease. I'm young and healthy and eat well, so it's at the bottom of my concerns. Now, twenty-one percent of people die of cancer. Cancer runs in my family, so I make sure that I have my regular exams. Now, the number I'm really more concerned about is the six percent of people that die in accidents, because I'm pretty accident prone. So this one's often a focus for me, and while I'm aware of the risks, I don't let it rule my life. I am a licensed scuba diver and skydiver. So if I don't let a six percent chance rule my life, why would I let a two percent chance, which is actually less for me because of my age, dictate my behavior? I don't wear a helmet everywhere after all. Case fatality rate, which is the ratio of confirmed deaths to confirmed cases in America, hovers around two percent for COVID. That means two out of every hundred people who test positive for COVID are dying, which can sound intimidating, but we also have to consider that according to Hartford Health and several other medical sources, thirty percent of all COVID cases show no symptoms and often go undetected, which drops that number down to closer to three and two hundred people. Now, for a moment, let's also consider that by age, only three in one hundred thousand people under the age of nineteen, two in ten thousand from twenty to forty-nine, five in one thousand from fifty to sixty-nine, and only fifty-four in a thousand from seventy on, whom get COVID face death. Now, on top of that, let's factor in this miracle vaccine with an efficacy of ninety percent, ninety to ninety-five percent. That means even if you are exposed to COVID, you only have a five to ten percent chance of actually getting COVID. And on top of that, your odds are dying now are all now, are also now significantly less, even if you do contract the virus, according to all available science, and I follow the science. Considering that vaccines are now available to the general public, if people still feel uncomfortable with seeing everybody's faces exposed, we have so many resources and technology available in this world, that if they are concerned, they may stay home, instead of demanding that the rest of society act to help their insecure mental state. So to conclude, COVID death rate, while higher than the flu and still isn't fun, still isn't at a level that we need to continue forcing masks upon others, and doing so at this point with a highly safe and effective vaccine being rolled out is really just to make some people feel better. If you're scared, get vaccinated. I would like my health and safety left up to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We do have two people on the Zoom meeting that would like to speak.
Okay.
Melissa Hendricks has her hand raised. Go ahead, Melissa.
Hi, I'm Melissa Hendricks. I live here in Salina at 2219 Edward Street. I came to the, today to ask the Commission to end the mask mandate in Celine County. When I came in front of the Commission back in July to speak against the mandates, the concerns that I shared then are still the same concerns that I have today. Mr. Tiller's office acknowledged just yesterday that the number of new cases and hospitalizations have fallen dramatically since the peak back in November. That's an exact quote from the news outlet. We have one person in the hospital and they're actively monitoring eighty-eight. And honestly, we haven't seen those numbers since before July. But, no one is talking about the fact that back in January 7th, KDHE changed the COVID testing parameters, which is exactly when the number of positive cases started taking a nosedive. No one is talking about the studies being done that have showed that mandates only reduce the number of cases by 1.8%, which is not significant enough to make a huge difference. Our own schools have stopped doing temperature checks because it isn't producing any meaningful results, and I haven't had an email from any of my kids' schools in over a month. It's time to lift the mandate. Mr. Tiller stated at the last meeting that recommendations are a seventy percent vaccination rate and multiple days at zero new cases. No offense, Mr. Tiller, but both of those recommendations are pipe dreams. A recent poll by a local radio station has shown that only fifty-two percent of respondents say they will take the vaccine, and the AstraZeneca vaccine has produced results that one in four, twenty-five percent, will still get COVID even after receiving the vaccine. I said it in July and I'll say it again, eradication has never been the goal. COVID is here and it's mutating and it's gonna stick around. We simply cannot continue to let fear drive our decisions. Numerous counties larger than ours have ended their mandates recently, along with several smaller counties. Shawnee County, which is Topeka, Cedric County, which is Wichita, Barton County, neighboring Dickinson County, and Brown County are just a few of the ones that have ended their mandates in the last couple of weeks. It boggles my mind that we allow our kids to play close contact sports without masks, breathing in each other's faces and sweating all over each other for an hour or more, and that's okay, but it's not okay for those same kids to sit next to each other in class without a mask, nor is it okay for me to sit at my desk at work without a mask where the nearest person is fifteen feet away and we are not, and we are separated by not one, but two Plexiglas walls, excuse me. Let me be clear in saying that lifting the mandate is not telling people not to wear a mask, okay? Let me be clear in that. By lifting the mandate, the Commission is not telling people who still want to wear a mask that they cannot, because they still can, that's a choice. Nor are they telling people who do not want to wear a mask that they must. It's a choice. It is putting the decision back in the hands of the people that you represent, which is where it should have been all along. It's giving people and businesses the right to choose what is best for their situation. I'm asking that they lift the mandate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Brad.
We do have one additional person that has their hand up in the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Linay would like to speak.
Okay, Linay.
Yes, I'm Linay Meyer from Salina, Kansas. I want to say that I'm very concerned about lifting the mandate, just the opposite of what Melissa is saying. I do understand some of what she's saying in regard to the children playing sports and stuff, that's never made sense. If you read the news, you can see that there's more and more cases that upsurge in some areas of the states, and I'm very concerned with the variants and different variants. We've got to be careful, very, very careful. I don't want fear to control either, but I do think we need to have common sense and let science and common sense make that decision. So please, please, please do not end the mask mandate. Thank you.
You bet. Next?
Mr. Chairman, we do have one additional hand raised in the Zoom meeting. Mr. Farber would like to speak.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you again through Zoom. I, like Ms. Hendricks a moment ago, am here in favor of ending the mandate on masks. I understand what the lady said just a few moments ago about the dangers and the variants and all of that, but if you, if you turn on the mainstream media, that's what we're getting pumped full of. It's full of fear, and we cannot make decisions in our country based upon fear. I love what the Barton County Commissioner said yesterday in her response as Barton County decided to resend their mask mandate yesterday. One of their Commissioners said, "I would like a little bit of time to hear what my constituents have to say about this matter." And after she came back, she said that the overwhelming majority, and if I remember the numbers correctly, it was something to the effect of ninety percent of those who emailed her and sent her comments were against the mandating of masks. And she followed through with that, and so they decided to resend their mask mandate. I would, I would like to reiterate, there are people in Salina right now, in Celine County, that are walking around with masks on their face, and, and that is their choice, that is their freedom. All we are wanting, and we have a large group of citizens that have discussed this in particular, all we are wanting is the same freedom. We would like the same freedom to mask or not mask wherever we go in our community. And that's, that's kind of what our American values are. It's based upon freedom. I believe this Commission has set a dangerous precedent in placing mandates upon individual citizens through this mask mandates, through the restrictions on gathering. Even yesterday, if you were watching the news at all, there's this new idea of vaccine passports coming out where you're gonna have to scan your phone or show your documents or show your papers in order to get into sporting events and in order to get onto an airplane. And, and all that is, is a further step down the line that these mandates have endangered our freedoms with. I don't know that I will personally not wear a mask everywhere I go, but I do want the freedom to wear a mask or not to wear a mask. And that's, that's all we're asking of this Commission, is to remove the mandates and to give us the freedom to make our decisions. I know Mr. Tiller has been pushing for that, that seventy percent number, and I know where he got it from. Way back several months ago, the CDC said, "If we could get all of the adults to have seventy percent vaccination rates, we could reach herd immunity." And even Mr. Hoppick on the City Commission voiced his, his opinion of that. He said, "I don't think our community will ever reach seventy percent vaccination numbers." And they're seeing that down in Cedric County now, they're seeing it all around. I think what needs to take place is just some common sense. Our numbers continue to drop, we have one hospitalization for the region, we have fewer and fewer cases being monitored, each reporting process by the Health Department, and it's time, it's time to remove these mandates. And I would implore you as a Commission to remove these mandates from the constituents. Thank you, fellows.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is that at, is that all, Brad?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, no one else has their hand raised in the Zoom meeting.
Okay. Seeing none, I will move into the action items. Item one. Oh, excuse me. Oh. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Administrator. The Consent Agenda, we'll approve the Consent Agenda. Is there any comments or changes by the Commission? Here none, we'll approve the agenda as presented. And those agendas are, consist of the approval prior minutes as presented, the tax rule adjustment, the payroll as presented, and the public forum agenda will be approved. Stand approved. Thank you, Phil. Action items.
Item number one, RFA 143-21 Bid Award for RCB Construction Projects with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I'm here this morning to, to take action on the Celine County Road and Bridge Department request to award the bid for Celine County RCB Construction Projects. Sealed bids were open on March 22nd, 2021 at 11:00 a.m. We received just one bid. In your packet, you should have attached the bid tabulations, which does provide some specific details of the bid. Also enclosed, closed in your packet is a, is the title sheet of the plan set, which also shows the, the locations of each project. Reese Construction was the only and therefore low bid for all six locations. Each project is unique and therefore very difficult to compare costs from one project to another project and from one year's projects to another year's projects. However, comparing the concrete quantity, the total concrete quantity for each location to the total project cost provides a rough comparison of, of what that project is from one year to another. So therefore, using this method, this year's projects are about six and a half percent higher than last year's projects. I also did contact another contractor who typically bids on these types of projects, and he said that he had a bid ready to go and was about ready to submit it, but then changed his mind. He said they just have too much work to, to submit another bid. And so that's, that's the main reason why we had just the one bid. Each one of these projects, you know, they're very simple projects, there's nothing unique that would scare away other contractors. I think it's just a matter of, of contractors are busy, and that's, that's a good problem to have for them. Alternatives for action for the Board would be, one, to accept the, the low bids from Reese Construction, and then the second alternative would be to reject a bid and then rebid the projects later on. Staff recommends to accept the unit prices submitted by Reese Construction for all projects for the amount of estimated work to equal $610,538.70. The construction industry has indicated that cost of construction will be significantly higher this year, and a six and a half percent increase seems reasonable when compared to the National Highway Construction Cost Index increases of 6.35%. Now that, those numbers are based off from September 2018 to September 2019, you know, so it's not really current as, as things are happening right now, but that's the, the most available data out there right now. So funds for these projects will be taken from the 125 account for special bridge construction.
Okay. I just wanna commend you on that, because it's, it's kind of interesting that your engineer's estimate is even, were sixteen percent below that. So I look at that, that six percent increase will, this bid is what they will stand by, right?
Yes.
The construction, so there won't be any six and a half percent construction cost on top of this?
Correct, yeah. What, what they bid is, is what they would be, being paid for.
Yeah, I look at it, that's a good, good deal. Thank you. Any other comments by the Commissioners or questions?
Justin, these projects are existing structures now on open roads, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Several years ago, several Commissions ago, several Engineers ago, maybe, you know, when, when the feds closed down a lot of bridges around Celine County, there was a project that was set in motion to, and, and assignment as to which one was gonna get replaced first. How is that project going, or is there such a list anymore, or where are we at on that?
The, the list that was put together is really for larger span type, like a reinforced concrete haunt slab. You know, the, the, so Celine County closed down quite a few bridges several years ago, and which, which does alter traffic, you know, throughout the county. And so, yeah, this list was more for bigger structures, like the, oh, this last project that was just approved by the Board was the, a bridge on Mina Road, you know, and that project-
I don't wanna get you off track, or get us off track of what we're really talking about here. I guess my thought was, most of those I thought were small structures, you know, spanning just a creek or something that, you know, a ten or twelve foot span, so. I probably shouldn't even ask the question.
No, sure.
At this time, because we're talking about something a little bit differently.
There was a small list of that, and those, I believe, have all been completed. And then, so now that they've, the report that you're talking about, they were just talking about generic, we're gonna do, you know, twelve box projects this year. You know, so, so we're, we're staying on top of that list, but like I says, most of them are the, the big span ones that they really focused on.
Yeah, I'm sorry to get us off track there.
Oh, it's fine. Good question. Any other question or comments? Are there any comments by the public? Yes.
Six percent is actually pretty good considering construction costs this year and how much they're raising.
Oh, yeah, you need to come up to the microphone. Yes, yes. Thank you.
I was just gonna say, construction costs this year, six percent raise, really isn't that bad. Construction costs are going up significantly this year.
Yeah, the price of steel, I've been told, is, you know, for, and for these projects, it's the, the reinforcing steel is really, is really going up.
Yes. Thank you. I will bring it back to the Commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for the listed project numbers to Reese Construction as presented by staff.
Second to motion. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 143-21 Bid Award for RCB Construction Projects. Are there any further comments? If not, I'll call it for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Next item?
RFA 146-21 Create Staff Position Assistant County Engineer with Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Hello again.
One more time.
So this request is asking approval to create a new staff position of Assistant County Engineer within the Engineering Division of the Road and Bridge Department. This request, if approved, could create the position and authorize the search to fill the position. The Archer Report indicated this would be a grade 24 employee with an annual salary of $61,490 to $93,653. This request is also asking approval to allow a premium pay if an applicant would serve two roles. And so therefore, if an applicant would have a dual license professional engineer and professional surveyor, they would serve as the Assistant County Engineer and County Surveyor. The premium pay would be $10,000 to $15,000 range. The HR has reached out to other counties about dual role employees and the, the premium pay concept. She did get several responses from counties around the state, you know, and they, there are employees out there. Counties have been doing this concept. And the premium pay coming from the other counties have been in the range of $7,400 to $40,000. And so, you know, in that range there, it kind of depends on that situation and the position, you know, that's having those, those dual roles. Alternatives for action would be, number one, create the position of Assistant County Engineer with an additional premium pay for an applicant that would also serve as a county surveyor. Alternate two would be to create the position of Assistant County Engineer and hire survey consultants to perform the duties required of a professional surveyor. Alternative three would be to advertise to replace the Vanquik County surveyor position and then further discuss the need for a project engineer. And then four would be any other suggestions that you could provide me. Staff recommends to create the position of Assistant County Engineer with additional premium pay for an applicant that will also serve as a county surveyor. However, if a dual license does not apply, we would have to hire a survey consultant to perform the duties of a professional surveyor. For budget impact, an Assistant County Engineer would be a grade 24 employee, as I mentioned earlier, with an annual salary of $61,490 to $93,653 plus benefits. The premium pay for an applicant would also serve as the, a premium pay for an applicant who would also serve as a county surveyor would be in the $10,000 to $15,000 range. The pay would be based on knowledge and experience within the duties of a county surveyor. If a survey consultant is needed to be hired, annual fees are estimated to be $15,000 to $20,000, and those services would include locating section corners for our projects, performing survey reviews, and writing- performing survey reviews, and writing legal descriptions. Also, if this request is approved, I would eliminate one unfilled engineering tech position.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments by commissioners?
Justin, I am in favor of the alternative number one, which is what you've prepared. I also would like to state that it is my position and my feelings that I don't want to micromanage your department or any other department around here. I know that you know what your department needs. I know that you have talked that over with the county administrator. I also know that this proposal will actually decrease the amount of money that your department pays in wages overall that's budgeted. It would be a decrease in that area. So therefore, I am in favor of creating alternative number one.
Thank you.
Justin, when you draw up the job description and when you place the add, at that point, will you require a surveyor's license, or would you highly recommend it?
Yeah, we would have a preference. So we would hire for an Assistant County Engineer with a preference of also a professional surveyor license. So we wouldn't require that, but we would just say that the applicants who have that dual license would be preferred. So we created the job description for an Assistant County Engineer, and so we already have a job description for County Surveyor, and so they would just have to fulfill both duties and both job descriptions. And there's a bunch of overlap in both of those descriptions.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Any members of the public with which to speak? Come to the microphone. Thank you.
Sorry to bother you guys. But are you looking for mechanical engineers or civil engineers?
Civil engineers.
Okay.
Road and bridge.
Thank you. Okay. Any other? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we create the position of Assistant County Engineer as presented by staff, and therefore approving RFA 146-21.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 146-21, create staff position Assistant County Engineer. Are there any further comments? If not, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
You bet. Next item.
RFA 144-21, land survey services agreement with Justin Mater County Engineer.
Good morning again, Justin.
Hello for the third time. So, so right now, we're in this transition period, and so this request for action is to kind of help, help kind of fill that gap as we transition. So with the retirement of the County Surveyor, my office is in need of obtaining professional land surveying services as we transition, like I just mentioned. So, and these services would include performing survey reviews and locating and establishing section corners. I am requesting approval of an agreement from Schwab Eaton PA to provide as-needed land surveying services in a temporary role. These services will be, will be needed until my office either hires a professional surveyor to be on staff or decides to permanently hire consultants to perform the professional surveying services. Currently, my office does not have an immediate need for section corner services. However, we have received surveys that are in needed, in immediate need of review. The consultant will bill us on an hourly basis. The hourly rates are shown on the last page of the attached agreement. Depending on the complexity of the survey and if errors are found, the survey review should take between 30 minutes and two hours of time per survey review. Alternatives for action would be to, number one, approve the agreement for professional services, and a signature by the commission chairman will be needed on the agreement signature page. And then two would be to not approve the agreement. Staff recommends to approve the agreement with Schwab Eaton PA to provide as-needed land surveying services. For budget impacts, fees will be dependent on the number and complexity of the surveys that come into the office for review. I'm estimating that fees will be less than $500 until my office either hires a professional surveyor to be on staff or decides to permanently hire consultants to perform the land survey work. Funds for these services will come out of the fees miscellaneous engineering line item of the budget. This line item currently has a balance of $1,000.
Any comments by the commissioners or questions?
Well, initially, Justin, I was concerned about the $1,000 line item, but when I dig into this a little further, the hourly rates that are, that are on here do look sufficient for you to be able to cover that with that $1,000.
Yes, yeah, it should be.
Is that my, a correct assumption?
Yes, yes, it is. Because I plan on this being, you know, really valid for, I'm hoping, you know, for less than a month.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Justin, are there any other departments in the courthouse or the Celine County that uses the land surveyor in your office?
Um, no, just, you know, just the Register of Deeds as, you know, and filing, you know, filing the surveys. That's about it.
Okay. Now, did our surveyor inspect or look at each one of those transactions?
Yeah, yes. I believe the, how the process is, is the, the survey is sent to, was sent to the County Surveyor, and they reviewed it and then corrected any errors, and there's a form that they fill out, and then they send that back to the surveyor who submitted the survey. And then I guess it depends on the land owner, whoever the survey was for, whether it, they want that to be filed with, at the deeds office or not.
Okay.
So I think that was, that's the process.
At that time before, at this point, did the, did the Register of Deeds office bill, or was that just being provided by our land surveyor for them?
So, we, yeah, we just provided that service, you know, free of charge. I'm assuming there's a fee, you know, when they would file the surveys at the Register of Deeds office, but that would be paid for by the surveyor or, or owner of the surveyor.
Okay.
But we, yeah, we didn't charge for those services.
Okay. And I was just curious, you're, you're talking about how much that you guys use it, but I'm worried about, it's like, since we was doing it free for the Register of Deeds, now that they're going to be, will they end up being charged, or will they bill this? Your, your choice here.
So, no, we, yeah, we didn't, yeah, we weren't doing the, performing this service for the Register of Deeds. We were performing the service, there's a state statute out there that says that surveyor or surveys have to be reviewed. It doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be reviewed by a County Surveyor. It just has to be reviewed by another land surveyor. And having a County Surveyor takes care of a lot of the conflict of interest that you would have if a, you know, a company would perform the survey and then the same survey within it, the company would review it. You know, there's, there's a conflict there. However, it is legal to do that.
Yes.
You know, and so we perform the service just to comply with the statute, not necessarily for the Register of Deeds.
Okay. My, I guess my question is, is that your impact, budget impact, does it include or reflect the cost that the Register of Deeds will incur during this period of time, having to have this done by an outside source?
Let me, let me try and weigh in. The Register of Deeds will not incur a cost.
Okay.
Justin's budget will absorb the cost of this contract, and they will perform those surveys on behalf of the, or the reviews on behalf of the landowners prior to filing with Register of Deeds, just like they always have. Essentially, he's got a vacancy. He's saving money by not paying out the payroll for that person who's no longer here, and so that payroll savings is really covering that cost. It's no different than would have been done previously. It's just that we have to have a contractor do it on a short-term basis, but it should be transparent to the Register of Deeds office.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, I also believe that our county clerk utilizes a surveyor also. Could you address that?
Oh. Yes, road vacation. So usually the surveyor, the former surveyor wrote our legal descriptions for the, each of our road vacation applications, so we use them as well. And we do actually have one road vacation in the works at this time, but we already have the legal description for that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner White? All right. Any other comments? If not, I'll bring it back to, are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the agreement with Schwab Eaton for as-needed land surveying services.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 144-21, land survey services agreement. Are there any further comments? If not, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
You bet. Next item.
Fallen Township Clerk appointment with Jamie Doss County Clerk.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. On November 3, the current clerk for the Fallen Township was elected to the treasurer position. This led to an opening, obviously, for the township board for clerk. Darlene Wolf has volunteered to assume that vacant position of Township Clerk, and I'm asking for her appointment today.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments by commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak? I will bring back the commissioner for discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we appoint Darlene Wolf to serve as clerk on the board of Fallen Township.
Second to motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve Fallen Township Clerk appointment. Jamie, Darlene Wolf. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Next item.
RFA 145-21, pull pad buyback replacement for Jamie Doss County Clerk.
Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. This request is to discuss and take action on our iPad buyback program and the purchasing of new iPads. On February 10, 2021, NO Inc. announced during a virtual meeting that Apple would soon no longer support the Air One and Air Two iPads. Currently, Celine County uses the Air Two iPads and the Generation Five iPads with NO Inc. software for electronic pull pads during elections. The Generation Five iPads were released in March of 2017. The normal lifespan of an Apple product is four to five years. NO Inc. has arranged for a buyback program for iPads that will no longer be supported and/or other devices that may be reaching the end of their supported life. With the majority of our iPads being purchased in 2017 and the buyback amounts decreasing as it gets closer to the end of Apple's support, the election office is recommending utilizing the buyback program for all current election iPads in order to get the most trade-in value and purchase 70 Generation Eight iPads. This exchange will bring all of our electronic pull pads up to date and will ensure safety and security and support during elections. This purchase will not only get the equipment up to date, but allow consistency of equipment for programming, training, and use on Election Day by voters and election workers. The NO Inc. pull pads are used to check in voters, pull up precinct-specific ballots on the touchscreen voting machines, look up polling locations by election workers on Election Day to assist voters on where they vote, and used with our voter registration software and posting voter credit. If approved, the total for the county to replace all iPads utilizing the buyback program would be $21,825. The deadline for the current quota amount in the buyback program is March 31. Alternatives for action is to accept the recommendation as presented, do not accept the recommendation. The staff recommendation, after discussing with our current administrator as well as IT, the election office recommends accepting the buyback and replacement program as presented. Five of the current iPads will no longer be supported, and 65 will soon run out of support lifespan. This also allows staff who consistently upgrade the iPads to the newest iOS software to have the same equipment across the board. By utilizing the buyback program now, the county is able to get the most value of the iPads. The budget impact, the total cost of replacing 70 iPads is $31,430. However, utilizing the buyback program offsets the cost by $9,605 for a total budget impact of $21,825. The funds for this project will come from the Technology Improvement Program. This item was not budgeted for 2021, but the IT director anticipates savings from other planned purchases. The election office will request monies for the future replacements in the TIP moving forward. I'm open for any questions.
Are there any questions or comments by the commission?
Well, I have a comment, a couple of them actually. Number one, in order to uphold the integrity of the voting system, the clerk's office, and so forth, I think we need to, to follow through with this. It troubles me that the equipment gets outdated so quickly with such little usage, but that's through no fault of ours or the clerk's office or any of us. The, the thing that troubles me a little bit, and it hasn't, this isn't a reflection on the clerk's office or any other, all of our departments for that matter, but we have until March 31 of 2021 to make this decision. That's 12 hours. I'd like to see these things come before us a little quicker than this. Nonetheless, I'm in favor of it, and I will vote for it.
Any other questions?
I got a question. Jamie, why was this not on your budget request, knowing that they were going to be outdated and not supported by Apple anymore?
That was not known prior to this, that I found out on February 10 of this year that that was coming, that their end of life was coming soon. Now, the current, the 65 that we bought in 2017, they will probably be supported until September of 2022. The problem being is, we will have a primary in August of 2022, and my concern is making sure that we have that security and support in case Apple decides to do it sooner. So moving forward, I want to make sure these are secure and ready to go for next year as well as for this year.
So, so the Gen Fives will be obsolete in a year?
Mm-hmm. And my concern is leaving that $9,605 on the table, because when we get closer to the end of their lifespan, their value is not going to be anything for anyone. So we're able to utilize that $9,605 for this purchase.
Thank you.
So moving forward, and I'm sure that you will, this will be a kind of a budgetary type item now, that you know down the road that this is what you're going to have to look at?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments by the commissioners? Any comments by the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we accept the quote for the buyback replacement program as submitted by staff.
And I'll second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 145-21, pull pad buyback replacements. Are there any further comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Nay.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Next item.
RFA 142-21, items to declare no value with Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Well, I know I have less hair than Hannah, but she is out today, so this is County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes, and I will pinch-hit for Hannah today. The request before the commission today is to declare a number of items no value... The request before the Commission today is to declare a number of items no value. These are items that various county departments have identified as things that they no longer need. We will attempt to sell the vast majority of them by public auction through the Purple Wave site. There are a few things that we think are just trash and will be disposed of, and there is a list of those items attached to your RFA, and I will answer any questions that the Commission may have.
When these items are placed on Purple Wave, are they open for public inspection prior to bidding?
Typically, what we do is we take a photograph of them and post that to Purple Wave. If folks want to physically inspect them, they can call our office and make arrangements to do that, but most of the time, people just, you know, bid based on what's online.
And I guess it's safe to assume the list was shared within the departments to make sure there was no cross-usage that could be done with it?
Yes, sir. Actually, the list was shared with all departments and with the rural fire districts as well. I know I, for instance, tried to find a calculator off of that list and didn't get a good one. So, I think it's, my personal experience is that these things are items that we probably need to dispose of.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Any members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we declare the items of no value and authorize the sale of disposal of said items as presented in RFA 142-21.
Second to motion. It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 142-21 Items to Declare No Value. Are there any further comments? I will call for a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Next item.
Review of Amendment 1 to Resolution 20-2297, Review of Section 6 Mass Mandate with Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Well, good morning, Mr. Tiller.
Good morning, Commissioners, members of the public. As soon as Phil gets these slides up here. So, here is our two-week update for March 30th. Next slide, please. I do have to mention that yesterday was a year since our first case of COVID was reported here in the county. I don't think any of us thought a year ago that this would still be going on at this point, but just looking back, we've reached that milestone, however you consider that milestone. Next slide. Looking at the national picture, or excuse me, the national update, US cases still continue to drop overall, although there have been some increases in other states, and US deaths are down, excuse me, down as well. Next slide. State of Kansas continues to see this same trend. Deaths are down, hospitalizations are down, positive cases are down. Next slide. And that trend continues to carry over here into Celine County, as we see our continued trends are trending down. Eradication is certainly not likely, but we are still trending in the right direction. The hospital is, on Friday, we reported that the hospital has zero COVID patients. They did get another one yesterday, and so that is unfortunate, however, still looking at extremely, extremely low numbers based off of where we were even a couple months Next slide. So, when we look at the cases per month, we can see that for the month of March, Celine County had 126 cases, which puts us pretty close to where we were last summer in terms of case numbers when the mass mandates were put into effect. Next slide. The same thing with deaths. We've only experienced two, thankfully, in the month of March. That's still in line with where the deaths were at during that summer last year. Next slide. Due to the lack of continued demand at the testing site that was at the Church of the Cross, that site has been closed down by the state. There are other places still, if someone is looking to get tested, they can either call their primary care provider or go to that website, gogettested.com/kansas, and be able to find a site and contact information for a place to get tested. Next slide. In terms of vaccine, we are registering and vaccinating all phases, one through five. You can either go to the vaccinatecelinecountycansas.com website to register. There are also other places such as Dillon pharmacies, B&amp;K, Key Rexol. The hospital, I believe, is receiving some this week, and so there's continued widespread availability of vaccine for those who want it. Now, the 70% that I have mentioned in the past still was just a goal. It was not a hard and fast, that no action could be taken or was recommended until that, but I do think that we still need to get closer to that. We're currently, as of last week, 28%, as we moved into this week with vaccination, and I expect that we'll be closer to 33% to 34% by the end of this week. Next slide. Again, if you're looking for where to get vaccinated, you can go to vaccinefinder.org. This website is supported and run by the Centers for Disease Control, and it will list the areas, not only here, but throughout the state or throughout the US. If you happen to be traveling or moving somewhere else, or you're looking for where to get a second dose if you happen to move here in the meantime after getting your first dose, then it will show the location as well as contact information, and then it will also show availability, how to schedule appointments, and that type of information. Next slide. As always, there still continue to be multiple places where you can find out what's going on: radio, our newsletters, our VaxFacts, social media, our FAQ Friday videos, the Celine.org coronavirus page. Next slide. Few additional updates here. KDHE has recently added states back to the travel-related quarantine list, and that would be Delaware, Michigan, Rhode Island, New Jersey, and New York, along with those other countries. And I want people to understand that KDHE has a algorithm or formula they use in order to determine which states need to be on this quarantine list, but it boils down to a state has to have a case rate three times worse than our own to be on this list. And it has been quite a while since any states have been on the travel-related quarantine. Next slide. We continue to watch what's happening with the variants in the United States and in Kansas. In the last two weeks, the number of cases that are due to variants have more than doubled. Kansas does not have a public spot at this point, and they didn't have an update either since the March 11th one on the number of variants cases, but we have not had any cases that we are aware of, of course, related to variants here in Celine County. But that is an area for concern that we just continue to watch and evaluate. Next slide. So, I don't know if anybody has seen this before, but when we're talking about all of the different things that are done, whether it's masking, handwashing, social distancing, vaccination, isolation, quarantine orders, and staying home when sick, none of those things are individually 100% effective. However, like Swiss cheese, when you pile several of them together, you increase the defense level to improve conditions overall. Now, I'm going to point out the obvious fact right here, that under the side of personal responsibility, it does say mask. I think that though, as well, is given that if the majority of people are wearing masks, that improves its efficiency. But no one measure, and really masking is the only measure that we have left that's not a recommendation, but no one measure is particularly effective on its own. It's the culmination of all of these things that improve that defense. And so, last slide, please. So, my recommendation for right now is to continue the mask resolution. A couple of other things to consider is that when we have made changes, we have tried to look at what has happened in that 14 days with case rates after those major changes. Seven days ago, we had two major changes, really, if you will. One of them was the expiration of the mask gathering order, and then, secondly, everybody for all of the school districts came back to school from spring break. Seven more days will kind of tell the tale about what happens after those events. Masking is also the least invasive, and this decision does not come from just a simple, this is the easiest thing, because it certainly isn't by far, but this is also with feedback and discussion from school district leaders, physicians in charge of both Salina Family and Salina Regional, as well as, I think it's also my duty as well, to make the best-practice recommendation to the Commission for continued best action at this time, at least until we see trends that are below where we were when we started wearing masks several months And with that, your questions?
Any questions or comments by the Commissioners?
Commissioner Shadwick here, and I have a couple questions. Jason?
Yes, sir.
Do, when people get vaccinated at other facilities besides the health department's collaboration at JCPenney's, are we aware of that, and does that figure into our figures?
Yes, sir. Recently, KDHE has started providing a report to us weekly that shows us also people that have been vaccinated other places across the state, and so that we are able to tie up or, you know, narrow down that percentage with some better predictability than just the number of vaccines that we have given overall.
That's good to hear. I'm still concerned about the 29,000. I'm not so sure that we will ever, ever get 29,000, with people, you know, not wanting to do this for whatever reason. Are you still sticking with that 29,000 as your recommendation to the city and the county as when your recommendation for the mask mandate would go away?
As a goal of trying to reach that, yes, with the understanding that, we certainly understand that there will be a point where the demand has been, for all intents and purposes, satisfied at this point, and so that will also have to be a part of the discussion once we reach a point where people are not wanting to get vaccinated anymore. But we still have, at this point, significant demand for vaccination.
Any other comments?
Yesterday, there was some news release that some Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines became available.
Yes, sir.
Were all of those able to be distributed?
All of them yesterday during that pop-up clinic, with the exception of about 20, I believe. And then the rest of that, along with some other that had been set aside, is being used at a targeted clinic this morning at Salvation Army, trying to outreach for hard-to-reach individuals.
Was that an unexpected arrival of vaccine that?
No, that was still part of the Johnson &amp; Johnson allotment that we had gotten at the beginning of the month. From that particular allotment of 500 doses, throughout the month, we have been trying to provide vaccination and reach people who are normally hard to reach, such as homeless, homebound, those that are at some of our places like the Rescue Mission and Ashby House and some of those areas, especially, too, those that are hard to reach with one dose, let alone to try and find and reach again for a second dose.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, at this time, we're spinning our wheels here. If we decide to vote today against the recommendation of the Health Director, and three of us decide out of the five that we want to repeal the mask mandate that we have in place in Celine County, it's a moot point. The city still has a mask ordinance in effect. The state of Kansas still has a mask mandate in place, so we can repeal it today, and it does no good. You're still going to be wearing a mask, and I think that we need to back off another week, wait until the City Commission comes back into session, work in tandem somewhat with the city. It does no good for the county to have an ordinance one way and the city to have one another. We need to work with them in terms of a 12- or 24-hour window instead of a one-week window. It's, we're spinning our wheels. I mean, I would say that we amend this, I don't know if it's even in the resolution that we have, but we come back in one week instead of two, and that would be right on the heels of the city making their decision on what they're going to do. Otherwise, it's an exercise in futility.
Commissioner Shadwick here, and I agree with Commissioner Vidrickson. The city really is driving this bus. When I voted for the mask ordinance and made it 3-2, my reasonings were two things. One was to stay consistent with the city and see there was any reason for the rural areas to be different than the city areas as far as law enforcement. And then, second of all, my third vote was also predicated on my worry that we are overwhelming the hospitals. That is obviously not happening right now. Not saying that it couldn't take an uptick, but that's why I was in support of this. To respond to both sides, because I think we're all getting hit a lot out there in the public. First of all, when people talk about their freedoms to do whatever they want, you know, we're still a nation of laws, resolutions, and rules. You do not have the right to drive 100 miles an hour down the wrong way on the interstate drunk. You do not have the right to smoke in restaurants. I could go on and on and on. Those are rules that your representative democracy or people have put into place. To the other side, and to my Commissioners, this will end at some point, and people on that side will not be happy. There are some people out there that never, ever, ever want this to go away. There will always be the next event. There will always be the next holiday. There will always be the next strain. There will be the flu season that comes. So, we got to be careful that, you know, listening to that side, yes, there are constituents, but at the same time, they're never going to be happy when this is over. The government portion of this is, it should come to a close here pretty quickly. Private citizens still have the right to wear a mask. Businesses still would have the right to enforce it in their own businesses, but as far as the mask mandate, I'm hoping it comes to a close here soon. But just to close, I agree with Commissioner Vidrickson. There's no reason for us to vote today or next week. The city hasn't done any. Thank you. Thank you.
I would, Chair, I'd like to ask some questions of counsel, if I could, on legislation that has just passed the state and how it impacts our ordinance. If I understand the language of it, if ordinance is detrimental to the operations of the business, businesses, then can reach out through District Court and get relief from the county. Is that correct?
It gives the businesses or?
Sorry.
It would give the businesses or an individual the opportunity to go to court and ask the court to review whether it's a resolution passed by the County Commission or if it's a local health officer order. And it's kind of interesting, because there's two different standards there. One of them seems to be tailored more toward gatherings. The one dealing with the County Commission's resolution, and the other that deals with mask mandates also references the gatherings, but it's, the language talks about being specifically tailored to a particular event as opposed to the language that dealt with the gatherings. And so, Senate Bill 40 seems to deal a lot with public gatherings as opposed to mask mandates. And so, that'll be something that has to be addressed in the court if that's challenged. But it does give an individual or business an opportunity to address that.
The only thing that gives me concern and pause is Section 4 of the mask mandate, where it does address gatherings. And I think if the mask mandate's going to stay in place, I would like to see some of the verbiage struck from that mandate. Item F refers to restaurants. Persons who are seated at a restaurant or establishment that offers food or beverage service while they are eating or drinking. These are people that you're exempt from wearing a mask. But then, it goes on to say, provided they maintain a six-foot distance between individuals, not including individuals who reside together or are seated together with only infrequent or incidental movements of closer proximity. I believe this does put a burden on restaurants as far as how many they can have in their establishment, how they have to set up their seating and all that. And in my estimation, that a business owner would have probable cause to say that it was detrimental to them, because he can only have so many people in his establishment. I would like the exception to stay there, and all the verbiage after while they are eating and drinking be stricken from the mandate. But I'm one person.
Thank you.
Did our exception, the mask gathering exception, would that eliminate that part of it or not?
I'm not sure I'm following your question. There's no, the mask, the mask gathering limitation was a health order, and it has ended.
Well, I'm trying to build on what Jim's asking, and that is, you know, this is in here, and it does say the six feet should be maintained. I mean, is that still part of the mask mandate? I mean, do we, do we need that in there? I guess is what I'm asking.
It is part of the resolution that you all adopted back in July. Whether you need it in there is, I guess, a decision for this body. Certainly, if there's support by three of you to strike it, we could bring that back. That's not an issue.
I don't want to make it any harder than what it already is. So, I mean.
I was just going to say, I think that that language in there is reflective of the ability of a, that group of people to be able to remove their mask as long as they're six feet away from another group. How necessary, I think it's a conversation about that part of it. But that's what it was in relation to, my understanding, not in relation to preventing any type of gathering, but in order to be able to take the mask off while eating.
Well, I'll go back to my original statement. That is, I'm okay with leaving this alone for one week.
I got a quick question, is that in attending a few of the, Saline County has had some rather large events in the last month. And let's, we'll start with the Equafest. And I know there was a lot of vendors there from all over the country. A lot of those states and places they came from did not have mask ordinances. We had a lot of attendees and vendors there from different counties here in the state of Kansas that did not have mask mandates. And in talking to a lot of the vendors and other people that were walking around, there's been a lot of those places and they come from that did, their areas were lower, or as low as lower than any people that had mask mandates. And also, then attending that and then just attending the Farm Show last week, and I was just, same situation, hardly anybody running around had masks on. It was just very open, dah 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 dah. Same way going to the Liberty Football Game. You walk in the door, you have your mask on, you take it off, and you go about your business. The people going up to refreshments to get that, they would put their mask on. Some would, some would not. Has there been, and I keep looking at the numbers, and even after all of this, have you heard of any instances where across the state, anybody that had attended these have had any influx of the virus at all?
No, I have not heard of any outbreaks, really.
Okay. And I just, I'm just one, you know, it's like from the beginning, it's just another one of those on and on. I understand where we're at, and it's like a large percentage of the people are out there going, let's remove the mask. I'm, just something that was said this morning, and it just kind of hit me, is like, another week, two weeks, it doesn't matter. I mean, we've cut it off this long, and every time we sit back and say that, we go a week or two weeks. The thing about it is, is that I look at this going, not in favor of it, never really have been, but it's another situation where I look at it as going, what's a week or two weeks? And the reason why I say that is just this morning, something was talked about, the fire, where a big brush pile of embers might be sitting there, but until we have that wind come up to 30, 40 miles an hour and reignite it and go on. I kind of thought about that, going, okay, if today we remove the mask and everybody sat back and said, okay, we could go do whatever we want, I'm in favor of it. But I look at it, what happens when that ember goes back? How much harder is it going to be to put the fire out? So, I'm looking at it as we can go a week, two weeks, and then look at it strongly and go, Mr. Health Department, what do you think?
Well, I certainly think that that analogy is really relevant. And I think that we are kind of in that spot where the ember could burn out or it could ignite, considering that.
Thanks. I certainly think that we are in a spot with that analogy, that it could either continue to just burn out. It continued, it could continue to smolder, or it could reignite. I mean, there's really, at this point, no way in knowing which way it's going to go other than to continue just watching conditions. I would just add, though, that if this commission, and this is, I think, in respect to Bob's comment, because it is significantly more burden on the city, so I think whatever we decide to do requires a coordinated effort with the city. But just keeping in mind that if this does turn into, you know, a wildfire again, that was a, you know, a possibility of removing this, and that then we'll have to address it at that time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any comments by the public?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We do have somebody in the Zoom meeting that would like to speak.
Okay. Go ahead.
Lanay, go ahead and unmute, and you can speak.
I would just like to say, I want to thank you for your wisdom in taking a look at a big, big, big picture. I don't envy Jason's responsibilities. That's a heavy load. But I think you're all making the right choice, and I thank you very, very much. I feel safer because of your decision. Thank you.
Okay. Next.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one additional person in the Zoom meeting who would like to speak.
Okay.
Mr. Farber?
Go ahead.
Hey, Commissioners, Chad Farber again. I just wanted to address some of the things that you guys said. First off, Mr. Chairman, we've been pushing this back for a week or two weeks for about a year now, well, since July, since you guys passed this mask mandate. You kept saying, we will revisit this in two weeks, we'll revisit this in two weeks. And I want to know, when's that going to end? You know, you can keep pushing it back two weeks indefinitely.
Yes.
And I feel like that's kind of what is taking place here with this board. I agreed with what Mr. Tiller said about his Swiss cheese illustration. Masks are just one part of the answer to what we're going through. But I think we, as citizens, are smart enough to put in place those other barriers, even if the mask mandate is not there. We can put those other barriers in place so that we can protect ourselves. And that's what we're asking for, is just individual freedom to protect ourselves. To address Mr. Vidrickson waiting on the city to make a decision, you know, you guys, as the County Commission, are not there to wait until the city makes a decision and then you make your own decision. It's time for you guys to make a decision on your own. As the governor signed the bill into place last week, you are the County Health Board, and your decision will determine what happens in Saline County. If you're waiting on the city, and I'll give these quotes from Commissioner Davis, the City Commissioner, he made these quotes in the City Commission meeting, I think it was two weeks ago now. He made this quote, and he said, quote, "People need absolute direction in regards to this," meaning they are going to continue to tell us what we can and cannot do. And then, he followed that up with this quote. He said, "We have seen what happens when we leave things up to people's wherewithal to make their own decision." And the reason I'm bringing those quotes up is, if we're waiting on the City Commission to open up this mask mandate and put down some of these things, it's just going to continue and continue and continue. The city's going to say, we'll wait on county, county's going to say, we'll wait on city. It's time for one of you just to make a decision, just to stand up and say, we've had enough. Look at Texas, look at Florida, look at South Dakota, look at Nebraska, all of these who have released their mask mandates, their numbers haven't gone up. None of them. There's no data. We keep saying, follow the science, follow the science, and we're seeing now that masks are not the answer. All we're asking is for you guys to give us the same freedom that you give to those who are wanting to wear masks. We're not saying outlaw masks at all. We're just saying, let's just draw a line and move forward. And it's time. We haven't seen any significant increase since we decreased the restrictions on capacity gatherings, and I'm so thankful for that. I'm glad that we're recovering. I'm glad that our hospitalizations are minimal. But I think it is time, Commissioners, that you just make a decision. Stop waiting on somebody else to make a decision, and just make one for yourself. I know it's a tough decision, and that's why we pay you the big bucks, right?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Farber.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I do have additional hands raised in the Zoom meeting.
Brad, we have one up here in the audience here first. We'll get with.
You've got a live one, yes.
Yeah.
It seems that, that folks are.
State your name and address, please.
Oh, Ken Ritz. I live in Salina.
Okay.
If we didn't exhale, it would be a personal decision as to whether we wear a mask or not. What one person exhales.
Speak into the microphone a bit more.
Another person, if they're in the vicinity, is going to inhale some or all of. And so, that's what makes it a joint situation. To me, it's just utter nonsense to speak of this as just purely individual, same as if you were driving 100 miles an hour down Santa Fe and said, well, I'll drive my speed, you drive yours. It's, you know, tell that to the pedestrian that gets run over. My concern is that, where are these numbers of?
Speak into the mic, please.
Where are these numbers for positive cases are coming from? And I say that because, as far as I know, there's no requirement that anyone report if they have COVID or have tested positively for the antibodies after they've been sick. Where?
That is a requirement that is placed on healthcare providers and laboratories to report those positive tests.
Okay. So, if you, if you paid the $25?
Mr. Chair, as a reminder, public comment is not a dialogue. It's for the public to just address the Commission, so.
If you go to Dillon's and test positively for the antibodies, will that information go to the Health Department indicating the name of the individual and that they tested for the antibodies? I mean, I'm just curious, where, when you say so many cases this, since the last reporting period, what are the sources? Are doctors required, and are they abiding by that requirement? When they have a patient who comes in and they check the patient and they show that they tested positive, is that information going to the County Health Department?
Okay.
And I know if people just stay home until they get better, there's no way that I could be on your list.
Can't hear three minutes. Uh, thank you.
But if the numbers aren't, aren't complete or aren't good, then what we're showing as an improvement may or may not exist.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Shadwick, and his answer, his questions have already been answered by Mr. Tiller.
Go, go ahead, Monty. Are you there?
Yeah, my point was, his questions have already been answered by Mr. Tiller.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Brad, we have another, go ahead, person?
We do. Mr. Chairman, Melissa Hendricks has her hand raised.
Okay. Hello, Melissa. You're muted still.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak again. I just want to say that I agree with everything that Mr. Farber said. It feels like that we are in a, that the County Commission is in a power struggle with the City Commission, and one of you guys needs to take a stand and make a decision. It feels like you guys are just waiting for, to see what the other person is going to do, and then you'll make your decision. Well, somebody has to take a step. Somebody has to do something to get movement in one way or another. We can't just sit here and keep, and keep fighting with each other on who's going to move first. Somebody's got to move. And with our cases, the way that they have been, with our hospitalizations, the way that they have been, there is no reason to continue the mask mandate. Like Mr. Vidrickson said, or not Mr. Vidrickson, I'm sorry, I'm not very good with names. One of the Commissioners said that all of these large events have happened. People are running around without masks. I was in Dillon's the other day, and people are not wearing masks. It's not being enforced. What are we doing? That's what I want to know. And we're just sitting here, we are spinning our wheels, but we're spinning our wheels waiting for somebody else to do something. And it's getting, it's getting really old for the people who, who want to be able to not wear a mask, because that's the freedom that they want to have. I'm just. I'm just saying, make a decision, please.
Okay, thank you. All right, and let me ask, this is not an RFA, this is, does not require any action, but at this time, do we want to, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do you have one additional hand raised in the Zoom meeting?
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Lanay Meyer again. I just want to say I don't see it really as a power struggle between the county and the city. I'm hoping both county and city commissioners are, are working together and coming up with the best decision for, for our county and city related to our, our health. And so I'm not really seeing a power struggle, I'm hoping that's not what it is, but I'm, I'm seeing them come together from a sense of common sense and being respectful of both sides of the, of the fence and working together. And it dawned on me as, as the conversation was going on, I'm so glad years ago, we got a wear a seatbelt law passed and for people who, wow, I would hate to see people have a, have a right to choose whether or not they have a, wear a seatbelt. And I think in this day and time, this issue fits into the same kind of safety measures. So again, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Lanay. Any other? Okay, Mr. Administrator, do you think, should we go ahead and, I mean, have a vote on this? I mean, it's just an information item, I mean, no, it's, it's an item, but this.
So this item is agendized for potential action if your commission wishes to take action, as it has been every two weeks since July, so you certainly are free to take an action or to not take an action. I've heard some suggestions that different folks have had around altering the schedule, altering the language. If you take no action, we will not be here next Tuesday, we will be here in two weeks. If you want us to move that up a week, I think we would need an action on that. If you want us to remove six-foot language, we would need an action on that. So it's, I think from a staff perspective, we would just welcome any direction. If there is no direction, we'll see in two weeks.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I might, Mr. Tiller has made his recommendation. And from my perspective, what we need to do at this time is simply a consensus, unless someone wants to make a motion for action, and that consensus is that we are going to follow, continue with the mask mandate and review it, I would like to amend that part of it to one week. We will review it in one week, we will continue with the mask mandate. That is a consensus, unless someone else wants to make a motion to repeal it, that's their prerogative.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm ready to get rid of my mask, that's me personally speaking. But when I took the oath, I believe the language said health, safety and welfare in there, and that's what I'm trying to reason out in my head. And so saying that, two more weeks wearing a mask is not going to hurt, or one more week, I am not in favor of tweaking this language, we had an opportunity, I think we all had input when we first adopted this very same resolution. Let's let it ride for a week would be my suggestion and review it, communicate with the city, as everybody said, that's a given, we need to work together.
Consensus, Mr. Wees.
I'm for following the, the guidance of the Health Director and happy to sit on this for another week or two.
Commissioner Shadwick, do you have a census, consensus?
A week is going to be fine, again, I think that this ends at some point and some of the comments that were made about the commissioners, the city commissioners' comments do disturb me, but I'm not so sure that that's the majority of, of how they feel. So I think a coordinated effort is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. And I personally is like, I would love to see this go away, I think it should go away, I'd really never been a big favor of it, but it's, hey, it's here and one week is, I, I look at it as going, let's just look at it next week and get rid of it.
Make it a table item, like is that a possibility, make it a table item, so you have to take action on it next week?
No, well, I don't.
Like when are we actually going to, like, force you guys at some point to take action?
Yeah, come up to the microphone, excuse me, oh yeah, please.
At one point, we're gonna have to make you guys take action, at some point you have to do something, we cannot just sit on this forever.
Well, I, I think that's what we're kind of doing here is making an, we're taking a course here to sit back and say.
You're not taking any course here.
Yes, we are.
Taking the course of nothing.
Well, ma'am, and I have to, I, I understand because I, let's just get rid of the mask and go on down the road, but our Health Director, and I look at it as far, I just don't feel like the embers are out and I would love to, I just, to me, we've put up with it for a year, I mean, well, even eight months.
I've never put up with it.
Well, but that's what, what I'm saying, I have put up with it and I still go out, when I go into a, a place where I don't know who it is and I'm there, I still wear a mask. Do I want to?
But that's your choice.
That's it, that's what I'm saying. It's, and you still, like you said.
Mr. Chair, I believe you have consensus.
Yes.
I think we need to move on with our, the rest of our agenda.
I was just listening to the lady.
We have made a decision, and that is that we're going to wear the mask for another week.
Yes, so.
At what point are you guys going to do something? Because the city.
We do not, no, we're, no. Well, I know, no, in a week, we'll, we'll, we'll look at it. So anyway, next item, please, we'll move on to the informational items. Thank you all for attending, yes.
Item number one, Community Corrections Update with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Well, good morning.
Good morning, Annie.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Commissioners, um, oh, I don't know. Well, the green light's on, can you hear me? Oh, thanks. What, is this the update? Okay.
Yeah, you're.
I've been here for a while and you know.
And you're still awake.
Five, five weeks post knee surgery, brand new knee, I'm feeling pretty sassy.
Some things never change.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll give you that one, okay. Update, October 2020 through March 21. Grants, 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 they're all due between May 1st of 21 and October of 21. I said none at completion, but when I wrote this, there weren't. We have two completed and one even received funding. We will have them all completed by end of April to prepare presentations, advisory board and county commissions in Saline and Ottawa County and get those all submitted by the due date. As you know, no one grant supports everything we do, we have multiple grants and I think one time I counted them and I don't, I quit counting, doesn't matter. But we fund from the fiscal year, the calendar year, federal year and different community foundations, so we never have one just budget schedule, all of them vary and all of them fund different projects, different areas of our program. And you guys, you know what that is. We are researching some funding from Ottawa County again, many, many years ago, they did fund us and, and gave us salary and different things and I just haven't approached it for years because their client population is very small, both juvenile and adult. And they also, majority of clients that may be put on probation with our services in Ottawa County live in Saline County. So they're living here, doing everything here, we see them here, we just don't have the need to have staff up there or the services are being met here on the majority of it. So I have not reached out to them, I am considering, because we've had some requests about drug court and pre-trial, which is fully funded by, well, not drug court, but is a majority funded by Saline County. So we do not share that with Ottawa County, even though we are the 28th District Community Corrections. But they continue to ask the prosecutor, and so I am reaching out to see if maybe a shared position somewhere might be applicable so they can bring some clients that don't live in Salina into those, into those programs. So I am looking, but I, I'm hesitant to ask for too much just because it's just, makes very little sense based on the services and the client population. On Monday, we were awarded on the 22nd, for the first time ever to request this, I, I shouldn't say that, I requested these funds clear back in Mr. Kissinger's days and couldn't get clear to him that we are not really a, a directly funded county agency. So I moved away from it, but this year, we applied and received full 888 funds to support our pre-trial and our drug court client services. So I don't know the exact amount, I want to say around 45,000, but we got excellent comments and, and from the commissioners and it was a very good experience. So now that we've tapped into that, that'll be another opportunity every year to apply and re-up those funds, hopefully. I want, this IT project, UpTrust, has been going on for a long time, you guys have been aware of it and what's going on. I just want to touch on it that we are seeing such success in it and we have brought on court services and the public defender's office at no cost to them. Community Corrections is covering those first 12 months of the service. The, the pilot project was to get CKF on, where they're, the UpTrust is building a HIPAA compliant, which is $30,000 project, they're doing it, but so we hope to have CKF involved also. But what we're seeing is it's caused a significant reduction in client failures to appear to court, also appointments and a huge reduction in warrants and lockdowns. So those clients that are getting these push notifications, reminders, they go out to them five days before court or an appointment, three days and then the day of. Plus, they can text back to our staff on their phones and we get that and they can communicate. So what we've found is that instead of forcing them to communicate at the level we want them to communicate, go down to where they communicate, everybody carries a cell and everybody loves to text and that's what they do. So that has been very successful. I also did a little research recently and Science Magazine did a study in New York where they're doing very similar things and they called them nudges, which is kind of a neat way to say push notifications are nudges, reminders. And that in New York, the study showed avoidance, at least 30,000 arrest warrants being issued over three years and approximately 20,000 persons having their cases fully dismissed instead of an active warrant. And so that, we're not New York, we're still in the, in the development phases, but everything we're showing is showing success and the courts are loving it, the clients are loving it and, you know, it's just working. So I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be the pilot project for UpTrust in the ever state of Kansas and doing this, they've always just worked with public defender's offices. So it's exciting and I, you know, hope to continue to see it grow. And I did attach some just local information on our outcomes recently to the back of this, so just review that when you get a chance, it is good. Talked about the COVID impact and typically our clients and the service would serve those most negatively hit, thanks to the dedication of the staff, the assistance from Jason Tiller and the COVID relief funds. Clients were provided with assistance from the staff, we did curbside visits, parking lot visits, we provided all the PPE in our office and to clients. Staff put together bags of PPE supplies and got them out to the clients as needed for their own homes. And then Mr. Tiller came in and, and helped us set up our office so that we didn't have to close down and we could provide the safest, best protection for everyone. And this is in the heat of the worst COVID time, everybody was hesitant. And when you're talking about clients, they're negatively impacted and underserved generally and you add a virus, a pandemic to them and schools shut down and people lose their jobs, it's scary for them. And for my, our staff and for our agency to be able to stay open, thanks to Mr. Tiller and the COVID relief funds and all the assistance we got was huge. And staff and clients felt so much better having a place to go. Court shut down and we offered laptop courts and we, we allowed them to go in and visit with their attorneys and then they did court in our office. I mean, the, the, I just don't think people realize how great Mr. Tiller and the county and the COVID relief funds and everything did to impact those underserved. And I think we need to remember that we, we don't, we don't keep the underserved in our mind, we don't keep the people that lost jobs and had to stay home and there was only maybe one income coming in anyway. And so we forget that those, those human beings were the ones that needed everything that this county and the city and everybody else did. So I just want to say that. We also, through the COVID relief funds, provided food, clothing, medical assistance, school supplies, you name it, we got it and I was so grateful and we never skipped a beat, our office never closed, we went on a shortened schedule for a while and then we were back at it in less than a few weeks. So that's kudos to the staff, kudos to everything I've already mentioned. We're doing more initiatives of reaching out for those funds, I mean, as you all know, anything that might shape like a, a job for Community Corrections, I'm going to try for it. One of the things that we are reviewing right now is because there was so much shutdown and I understand it, but so much either shut down completely or gradually went to telehealth or virtual assistance, as they're starting to open back up, we're seeing that the clients we serve tend not to report for every appointment like they're supposed to, tend to miss mental health appointments, tend to forget. And so we are looking at contracting with a licensed psychiatrist to do telemed checks with the clients who don't get there on their appointment, because once you miss a couple appointments at several mental health providers here locally, you're put on an open access where you have to just come and sit until you can be seen on a couple of days a week. And we're just finding clients that either do it a couple of times, aren't seen and then quit going, don't go anyway because they don't want to sit there all day or whatever, you know, there's always a reason. We thought if we could offer tele med checks in our office, then we would do that as a temporary basis to make sure the clients stay on their meds because we all know what happens when they don't. And then we would move them gradually after, you know, review and getting their meds back on track, back to their local provider. That is in the infancy stage, I would love to have that going up and going before 2022, but we'll see. Case loads reduced, but we're seeing them start to go back up now that the court is doing trials and hearings, so we anticipate that will be going on. And we just revived our bike program. We used to have Ellsworth Prison and PD, Salina PD working with us and on the bikes that they had, both of them stopped due to space issues and other things. So we wrote, I wrote a grant to the community foundation, got $5,000 to purchase bikes. That was well received, if we go through them and need it, we'll purchase some more bikes. We find out that clients on bikes do tend to get to their jobs and other things more efficiently, instead of waiting at a bus stop and waiting for it to come and again, just training to meet them where their needs are. Budget issues, again, I reminded you, we participate in many different levels of tracking these budgets. Currently, we are a little heavy extra dollars in a few areas of client services due to the COVID shutdown of some providers, but now that we're seeing it pick up, we know that we'll even that back out or we'll allocate it to other areas such as facility equipment, transportation, which have been huge expenses this year. huge expenses this year. And that's it for our map. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by the commission?
It's just been a tough period for, a tough year for everybody, all the departments, particularly those that are working directly, as you say, in your department with clients who maybe some of them haven't been where they should have been. It's just, it's a tough year for everybody.
Yes, thank you, it is.
And Annie, thank you for your service and through all of this here to keep all of this going. Great job.
Thank you.
Next item?
County Administrator's update with Phil Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning again, commissioners. Just three items that I wanted to touch on today. Going to go with two negatives and a positive. The first negative is the cost of natural gas. You may recall that about a month ago, I mentioned the fact that we had had that cold snap. Natural gas wholesale prices went through the roof. So the three county facilities that are on contracts with wholesaler have now received their bills from last month. The senior centers' natural gas bill went from $463 in January to $4,697 in February. The health departments went from $415 in January to $6,047 in February. And the jail went from $4,994 in January to $47,967 in February. So I bring that to the commission's attention because none of those departments turned back that much money in their utility line items at the end of 2020. The health department, certainly, they're in their own fund. I expect them to be able to cover that additional cost, assuming it doesn't continue into March. Senior center and jail, you know, we may have to supplement them with other general fund resources. So I just wanted the commission to be aware of that for the end of the year.
If I might interrupt you just for a second. You mentioned we're buying that from who?
The firm is called Symmetry.
Why would we not be on with, like everybody else in the community, I would have thought, with Kansas Gas?
Well, that is a decision that was made a number of years ago, and Kansas has consumer choice for gas for commercial enterprises. And so at some point in time, the county decided, as did a number of other counties throughout the state, to purchase that gas on a wholesale basis. And the theory, of course, is that that's cheaper. You buy in bulk, you buy in advance, and then supplement with the spot market. And so presumably, we've been paying less than Kansas Gas Service for a number of years, hopefully, and now we're paying significantly more. So that's the way that that works.
My guess is, whatever we saved, it was eaten up in one month. And I know that my home gas bill, and I don't know if that's a fair comparison, but it was up about, you know, 25% or something to that effect with Kansas Gas. So any rate, I'd like to, to, my feeling is that we need to get that on a pretty quick study session or whatever, pretty quickly.
Yes, so as I mentioned when we talked about this before, without the shocking numbers, I have requested updated contracts from Symmetry. And so once I get those, still have not received anything yet, we can review that with the commission to determine whether you want to go forward with that, or you want to go back to Kansas Gas or what you would like to do, so.
Phil, I, just, and I'm thinking real quickly, so in other words, Community Corrections, maybe Expo Center, those weren't on these, this other, so we were on separate ones from different ones, different departments, I mean, different facilities, Road and Bridge, as an example?
Correct. Correct.
They're, they're on natural gas, I mean, on Kansas Gas? See, that, that decision, wherever that was made, doesn't make sense to me.
Again, several, several years before me, and I think probably several years before you.
Because I've never heard this before. It sure doesn't make sense to put one of your departments on, on one program and the other one that you're trying to save money with not put them on the same program. So look at me like we want.
So we have plenty of room to revisit that, but I just want to make you aware of the budgetary impact.
You sidelined here.
Okay, so the second issue is computer security. So I just want to, again, raise this issue to the commissioners for your awareness. We have dodged a couple of virtual bullets here lately that have been pretty significant. We had our remote access to our exchange server, which is our ability to get email on your phone, our IT staff. Again, the hackers got in, but they didn't get anything back out, as far as we can tell. So, and we've had that evaluated by the feds. And so we think we, again, dodged a bullet on that one. The other one is our financial system. We use a company out of Colorado called CIC. They were hacked. Their servers in Colorado were hacked recently and compromised a lot of data for counties that use their servers for backup. We do not use their servers. We back up our own information out at Road and Bridge. And so, again, dodged a bullet. But I mentioned both of those things to the commission because, as you know, there have been other counties around the state of Kansas that have suffered some severe hacking incidents, ransomware incidents. And I just have to let you know, that is getting closer and closer to home every day. And so when you see very expensive computer security upgrades, and when you hear people, staff members complain about the fact that we're going to be going to multi-factor authentication, and it inconveniences you all trying to access your email, there's a reason for that. And so I just wanted to reinforce that. So those are the two negatives. I'll move on to the positive. And the positive is the American Rescue Plan Act. So I went to another webinar on this, and there is lots of money out there besides the county. There is money in that bill besides what is coming to us, which they call the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. There is dedicated money in the bill for restaurants, mental health centers, capital projects such as roads, housing assistance, airports, shuttered venues like movie theaters that were closed, museums and libraries, public health workforce development. That's all on top of the money that we stand to receive. And then this webinar went on to talk about the fact that, and this is only one bill, Congress is reintroducing earmarks into their legislative process, and they anticipate a large infrastructure bill working through Congress later this year. So the, the point of saying that is that there, there should be a lot of access for folks who were negatively impacted by the pandemic to have a variety of sources, not just looking solely at the county for assistance. The county can help a little bit, but there are a lot of other programs that are going to be rolling out over the next couple of months. And I will mention that we do have our request for proposals out on the web for hiring a consultant to assist us in navigating through this thicket of federal regulations. So that is what I had to update on this morning, and I'd be happy to take any other questions
I don't have any. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay. Thank you. Next item? Commissioners' comments? Is there any comments? Okay, well, we'll go into study session. Before we go into study session, I'd like to take about a three-minute recess break. Okay?
Of interest forms.
Am I on? Yeah, okay. So recently, the county commission approved the retitling, reorganization of the former Jail Reduction Committee into a new committee on reducing criminal behavior. And so we've taken new expression of interest forms. Director Grievous, myself, Commissioner Shadwick have reviewed the forms, which were included in your packet. And so we just wanted to have a conversation today about who all your commission might see as representatives of the various different slots on that committee. And then we would bring this back as an RFA next Tuesday with appropriate names. So I think I might turn it over to Monty to see if he has any comments, and then Annie?
Commissioner Shadwick here. I was really, really, really excited about the level of applications that we got for this. It was hard for us to narrow it down. I frankly didn't know everybody, but I think between the three of us, you did know everybody. Annie, very, very helpful with a couple. I am very excited about Jack Shaahan and Julie McKenna. We picked Jack as the attorney and then Julie as the citizen at large. They both have extensive knowledge of what's going on there, and I think they can be very helpful. So I would hope that the commission is happy with what we picked, but if, if anybody has any other comments, I'm happy to hear.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Shadwick. I'd like to go down the, just to make sure we're all on the same page, the list of member agencies that we wanted to participate, that we, was approved in the bylaws, and tell you who, because I did reach out to several people also, knowing that they would be excellent on this committee, and of course, then reviewed the interest forms with Phil and Commissioner Shadwick. So the county commissioner would be Commissioner Shadwick, if you all allow that. Community Corrections Director, myself, or the designee, which would be great. County Attorney or designee. I reached out to Jeff Ebel, the county attorney. He did get back to me, telling me that himself or Alex Strexel would participate, and they may have to tag team it, which I totally understand with trials just opening up in March. They're very busy. So I was just delighted that he was willing to give staff time to do that, so that was great. And then an attorney practices significant criminal defense. Jack Shaahan automatically comes to mind many times in various incidents, and if he was listening to this, he'd be laughing. But he works with a large population of our clients, but also outside of that, and does, has been doing defense work in this county for as long as I can remember. So he would be an excellent member to participate. And again, I keep trying to remember when we're talking about having people participate, I also like that some of the clients that Jack represents, they sit in jail. They may be there a while. They may be on our pretrial program, moving through that process, different things. And so Jack adds that extra piece to it. The substance abuse treatment organization representative that was discussed strongly and recommended to Cheryl Callahan from Ashby House. Not only has she been integral in the Ashby House, she's been integral in substance addiction processes for many, many years. We work very closely with CKF and Ashby, which merged together and have a marriage now that just fits the needs of women and children and homelessness of that population in this community better than it ever has. So that's exciting if, if she's approved. And then Julie McKenna, we, she, we're putting her as an interested citizen.
Session. Any other comments or any from the commissioners?
Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.